Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024. Let the call of the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boyce?
Yeah.
Turn that on. Martin?
Yeah.
Dole?
Yeah.
Crockett?
Yeah.
Geske?
Phillips?
We have a quorum.
Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes in your packet. Everyone has got the regular board meeting minutes from January 16th of 2024. Any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented by the clerk. Questioned by Martin, seconded by Crockett. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Boyce?
Same.
Dole?
Phillips?
Yes.
That's three. Motion carries. Public participation tonight, we have a number of people signed up to talk. Just a reminder that public comments, a time for you to address the board with comments, not a question and answer period. If you have topics that you'd like to be addressed, you can contact the village administrator during normal business hours to set up an appointment. He will attempt to address the concerns. Each commenter will be limited to three minutes, and we ask if your comments have already been made by a previous commenter, or you don't continually repeat the same comments. The first one is Kimberly Erling.
My name is Kim Erling. I'm running for Illinois State Senate, District 40. Parts of Mantino, as well as the surrounding communities in District 40, are affected by the outcome of the deal made with the Goshen plant and our current government officials. Patrick Joyce, your current senator for the west side of I-57, and many other elected officials voted yes on giving the foreign-run corporation many tax breaks that will definitely be felt by the community. My husband and I walked door to door and spoke with many residents of Mantino while trying to petition signatures to run for senate. During our conversations with the people of Mantino and surrounding communities, we have heard both sides of supporting citizens and non-supporting citizens. I, as a candidate, took those conversations into consideration while doing my own research on the pros and cons, but I just couldn't get past the majority of the cons and the people's observation that Goshen is not what our community wants. Between unanswered questions from the corporation itself, safety concerns, and the infrastructure of the existing resources not being able to handle what the officials decided for us, the amount of growth that would be pending the completion of Goshen. This state and our elected officials have forgotten that we, the people, have a voice, and when the overwhelming majority has spoke up and expressed their unsatisfaction with the proposal that was on the table, you, the elected officials, should have listened. This deal, in my opinion, as well as many citizens I have spoke with, was inspired by money and empty promises. The citizens already have drawn the opinion, throw enough money into the pockets of the politicians, and you can get what you need. The state of Illinois has already taxed the residents and big businesses into leaving year after year. So now the broken state, instead of trying to repair its relations with the business we lost, or get back the industries we once had, our state government found it to be in the best interest of its people to bring in a business with known ties to the Chinese Communist Party or the CCP. The state of Illinois has given Goshen one of the largest, if not largest, incentive deals ever. I can agree that jobs are an important part of community growth, but we already had those jobs, and we let them move away without offering them the same incentives we have often offered a foreign corporation. We should not be welcoming the CCP without being able to guarantee the safety of our citizens, especially with the toxic chemicals that have not been fully disclosed to the public. This election cycle and others to come, I hope that the people of-
At your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Erling.
Hi, my name is Chris Erling. As my wife, Kimberly, has stated about Goshen, I also have a problem with a few other issues. First, the disappointment at the city, county, and state officials like Patrick Joyce, who are pushing this through, whether residents like it or not. We have had Braidwood City Councils do the same thing and not listen to the majority, and at one point, the city was $2.9 million in debt. We voted everybody out and actually turned that around. We have a developer that's trying to come in and also try to push some agendas that citizens don't like, but we've, as the citizens, and the city council that we have now that actually listens to the citizens, have actually pushed this developer back to the drawing board to tell them that, you know, that we, you know, as citizens, you know, we deserve what we would like also in the city, not just what you want. We also are, we're not against growth and new corporations, because, yes, I've seen many plant closures, industry closures, in the time that I've been in, the business that I've been in. The part that just annoys me is the amount of offering that you have given this CCP company, but yet, this state officials, elected officials, y'all have watched businesses leave this state without an offer, any kind of an offer like that, to help try and keep them. We had work here, we had jobs here, we had industry here, and they've left the state of Illinois because, you know, we, so now, now we're, the only jobs we're being offered, are being offered by some CCP, some communist, you know, controlled China corporation. It's ridiculous. I, me as a one, as a laborer, I wouldn't even do that job. I'd walk right off that job and tell my boss, no, thank you, I'll take the, I'll take the year off before I go work on a communist job. So, you're, the part that, the other part that annoys me is that you guys are offering supposedly 2,600 jobs, and I haven't heard not one about any union job there. Them jobs, every single job there, from the minute that you move dirt, to the time you're done, to whoever's cleaning floors at night, that should be a union job. You guys, I haven't heard not one, the building might be built by some union workers, great. After that, who's protecting the people who are working at that toxic place and with what offerings? You should be offering 55,000 in this economy that we have now is still very, very tough. And, and, yes, we need the jobs, but at 55,000, it's very, very tough, even still at that offering. We need union jobs, and we need to bring, you know, give them better offerings, especially for a billion-dollar Chinese company that you're stuffing down our throat.
Thank you. The next commenter is George Reichert.
I got in a bad habit of looking at obituaries, and I didn't know this woman, but her name was Patricia Hartman, and for some reason, I was drawn to reading her obituary. She had passed away January 17th at Riverside, and she was 94 years of age. She had moved to Mantino in 1949, and she was involved in the Methodist Church, and the Mantino Sportsman's Club, and the golf course, and other numerous things going on in this town. She was still active and living in her own home. She would frequently be on her iPad, keeping up with her friends and family and the latest news. Pat was also in strong opposition of the Goshen battery factory coming to Mantino. She could not understand how something of this magnitude was not presented to the citizens of Mantino for discussion. In her own words, "A sad day for the future of Mantino." Here's this lady, 94 years old, and she had enough common sense and intelligence to realize this is not good for Mantino. What is your guys' excuse? That's what I want to know.
Thank you. Next commenter is Francine Fedema.
I'm giving my time to Bill Barnes.
The next commenter is Sandy Chiz.
Hello, I'm Sandy Chiz. My first question, and I know I won't get an answer, is who negotiated this deal for Goshen? It's a terribly unfair deal. I mean, you're talking about a 30-year cap, $2 million a year in taxes for 30 years. In 30 years, $2 million is going to be worth about 27 cents, the way things are going. So I just think whoever made this deal should really give it up, because they suck. We won't be here to pay for this. None of us are going to be here in 30 years, and hopefully, Goshen won't blow up, so we'll, our children will be here, and our grandchildren, and our grandchildren, great-grandchildren, but they'll have to pay for it. You've really sold them out. And the other is, you're enacting all these ordinances and all these things that are going to change how we can participate, how we can stand up here and speak to you. I didn't read the ordinance, because I didn't know there was a copy somewhere that I could find, so I didn't find one. But what I don't understand is, why should we abide by an ordinance that you're enacting as this group, when you don't even pay attention to the ordinances? You've already enacted. You've gone against all the ordinances in the past. You should lead by example. That's all I'm saying. And the other is, if you're going to restrict our participation, haven't you already bought into the Communist Party? I mean, haven't you already? You're limiting our participation, you're limiting what we can say, how long we can say it, and how many of us can speak. That's absurd.
Thank you. Next commenter is Bob Forsythe.
I'd like to say we did a great job last year. We got a massage parlor, we're getting a church with a drive-through, and we got Goshen. Great, great planning, worked out well. Now you don't want to have public participation the way it's supposed to be. We had an incident this year already, cost a gentleman $325. I talked to Chris about it at that moment, as a matter of fact, and the reason that incident even happened was we have, we don't listen. The village administrators and the trustees do not listen to us anymore. You do what you feel like doing. That incident where Roy had to pay 325 would have never happened if somebody would have listened. That property got zoned right across from my house. You know who never got the letter? I didn't. Never came to my house. So who failed there? Who failed the village there? I didn't get the letter. But limiting public participation? Just admit you're guilty. You should listen to what we have to say, because you learn from others. We learn from others. Every day, we go and we learn something. The day you stop learning something is the day you failed yourself. And Tim, you failed us. You have a breach of trust. We don't trust you anymore at all. You used to have some trust. We don't, nobody trusts you. Trustees, you guys are the same way, we don't trust you either. And if you vote yes to limit our public participation, your trust level's failed even more. As for going to not answering questions here, that's wrong. This should be the place we should be able to come and ask questions and get answers, not just have to go to Chris and get an answer, because we have to come here, then we got to go there. Why can't you guys just answer a question when we ask it right now? You just sit there and stare at us. This is a self-inflicted wound on you. We didn't bring this to you, you brought it to us. We come in here and we try to ask questions, and all of a sudden, your time's up, you ring the bell. I don't care about the bell. I really don't. You can ring that bell all day long. If I'm done, I'm done. If I'm not done, I'm not done. But I've had enough. I've really had enough. You should be ashamed of yourselves to sit there and tell us we're going to be limited. And if you guys vote to okay this, everyone's going to remember it, and we're going to keep coming. We'll be here every week, be at every board meeting. So when I come in and you get to see my face, Tim, you can just think, Christ, he's here again.
Thank you. The next commenter is Denise Nicholson.
I asked you months ago if you had Philoctomo, do you remember the word? Heart, a love for this village. The only person in the two voting bodies, and I'm talking this body and the planning and zoning, who showed Philoctomo was Mr. Martin, when he voted no to the CCP, no to national security risk, no to the possibility of toxin, toxic poisons being released in the air, soil, and water, no to the taxpayers paying millions or billions of dollars to our number-one adversary, China. We find out through texts that one of the Republicans seeking county auditor position, Colton Nekoff, said that they voted on a business missing many important aspects. Sounds like a lot of the taxing bodies were deceived, bamboozled, in my opinion. You're about to vote on public comments. It sounds like further limiting our speech. It sounds like something else is coming that maybe the residents are not going to appreciate, or you don't want to answer the Goshen questions, because every day, in the national news, even high-ranking Democrats are saying the CCP are up to no good in our country, and the businesses in the land they are acquiring may not be what they are saying they are going to do with. You owe us a town hall, meeting where we can question each one of you why you voted yes for Goshen, knowing the potential bomb in our village, because 2,600 jobs doesn't seem to be correct. Mandarin speaking for top jobs, unions are not being used, holes in ceilings from the quarry all need to be addressed. $125 million check written already by the state of Illinois, and to whom? I am concerned and worried about Goshen. I and many others have voiced our concerns, which happened to be spot-on as the months passed. I'd like to be guaranteed 100% that none of the above dangers will happen, but you cannot. Experts have confirmed that. My heart wants to stay in Mantino, my brain says, get the hell out while your property is worth something. You all owe us answers and the courtesy to respond. You all have created havoc in our lives, and we deserve respect and answers. Remember, we are a republic, not a communist country, so to vote limiting the resident's speech shows how much disdain you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter is Bill Barnes.
All right, thanks. As Francine said, we can borrow some of her time in addition. So I have some soundbites that I'm going to play from a couple of questioning, or questions on Capitol Hill, and to former CIA Director Leon Panetta, Secretary of State Mike Pompeo, and current FBI Director Christopher Wray. And I know this isn't a question and answer, but the one thing that I would ask you, and everybody in this room for that matter, is, do we think that we're more intelligent and more aware of what's going on in the world than these three people? So here's soundbite one.
Appreciate your service. There is a Chinese company building an electric vehicle battery plant in my district. As part of the project, they plan to bring 20 to 50 Chinese nationals to Michigan. What do you feel are the odds of those nationals may engage in espionage for the CCP while they're in the United States? I know you've both been involved in looking at these kinds of things. Secretary Pompeo, you were issuing work visas to Chinese nationals as part of the State Department. I wondered if you'd both comment on that.
Look, I don't think there's any question that they're going to take advantage of that situation, and I think we have to be very vigilant about what the hell's going on. That's just the way they operate. They will, they'll, they'll establish a manufacturing unit, they'll establish whatever they can, and then they will use that for their own intelligence purposes, they will use that for their own economic purposes, they'll use it to be able to gain the kind of advantages that they want that are counter, frankly, to the interests of the United States. I think it is very important, in those situations, to make sure that we are, that the United States and that our intelligence capabilities are being used to make sure that we know what they are doing that could hurt the United States.
I think it is worse than the fact that they will engage in espionage. I think that's just top of the list. They will use this in ways that will leverage Chinese advantage. These plans are deeply dangerous to our national security and ought not be built.
Okay, and then here's the next soundbite. Bear with me. This is Christopher Wray. Here's the current FBI director.
... potentially damaging cyber attacks. There has been far too little public focus on the fact that PRC hackers are targeting our critical infrastructure, our water treatment plants, our electrical grid, our oil and natural gas pipelines, our transportation systems. China's hackers are positioning on American infrastructure in preparation to wreak havoc and cause real-world harm to American citizens and communities.
And then this gentleman.
... a nonprofit to combat CCP influence in the U.S., and he joins me now. Michael, that was quite the statement by Christopher Wray. What is the worst-case scenario, as you see it?
The worst-case scenario is that they could turn off our lights, damage our water treatment, and stop our cellulose communications in the event of an invasion of Taiwan. And Director Wray said in 2027, they want to be able to invade Taiwan. To do that, they want to disrupt life here in the United States of America, to break our will to respond to that aggression. So we've seen this in Texas, where I live. They put malware onto our electric grid because they want to be able to shut it off. That's why the federal government and state governments need to speed and accelerate solutions to protect our critical assets here and to protect our citizens.
That's your business. You're in the business of combating the CCP in the U.S., so how? How do we fight back, Michael?
Well, like, in the state of Nebraska, they found that our nuclear missile silos are surrounded by Huawei telecom equipment that's used to intercept our communications. The state of Nebraska said that all needs to be ripped out immediately. Here in Texas, they said no investments from adversary nations in our critical infrastructure. In Florida, they're protecting the data that citizens turn over to the state government. These are all essential solutions. We need to build supply chains based on free countries. That's what state and federal governments and private sector need to buy from. That's what we need to build an economy around. We need to protect our critical infrastructure, build supply chains based on freedom, and make sure that malware and that technology that could be used against us doesn't get into our supply chains.
In February 2022, Wray said the FBI opens a China-related investigation every 12 hours, and 2,000-plus cases were underway. He also went on to say, look, even if we devoted all of our FBI resources to just the CCP, we'd be outmanned 50 to 1. So, Michael, how? How did we let ourselves become so vulnerable here?
Well, we tried to welcome China into the liberal world order, as we call it, and as they came in, they proved that they are still a communist country. And so Director Wray made a really important point. He said this isn't about the Chinese people, it's about the communist government. And that's why he described this multi-pronged assault and a whole-of-government attack on the United States of America. That's why we need a whole-of-government solution here, including the private sector, the federal government, as those experts were testifying yesterday, and of course, state governments need to-
So sadly, we apparently have given them the Chinese Communist Party and heads of espionage Midwest headquarters in Mantino.
Thank you. The next commenter is Annette Lamore.
Good evening, everybody. I originally was going to talk about the public participation, but I think you got the gist from other people who spoke tonight. Why would you shut down the people who care so much about our community? Please vote no on that. And I want to say, Mantino is a great place to live. I've been here all my life. I'm 74 years old, so I am grateful for many, many things, but it's not just the beautiful new buildings we have, it's not just the Public Works Building and the new, the new police department, it's not our wonderful fire department, and that's another whole topic I'd love to talk about another time, because they are terrific. But it's the people here that make our community so special. We have a community of very good people, intelligent, well-educated. Most of us are working or retired. Our unemployment rate is 4.4%, and I got that from the Kenkey County Board. But I have concerns, because recently, we had a shutdown of oil, of water boil order. That hurt some of our businesses. So I hope you're all thinking about that, because there should be a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce to talk about what we can do to help some of those coffee shops and restaurants, any businesses that had to be closed down for two or three days. It's hard to meet the bottom line in business today, especially in the food industry. So what can we do to help them to recover from that? I also know that people are moving out of our town, and this battery plant's not going to help that. I have people I love and care about who are planning to move. It's a lose for us. It's a big lose. We care about each other. There's so many fundraisers in this town for people who get cancer or who lose their loved ones in a tragic accident, and that reminds me, another thing, we have a lot of accidents, especially in one spot, Route 50 and 12,000 North Road. There were 32 fire department calls there last year. There was just another one, maybe two of them in recent days. Something has to be done at that intersection, so that should be on your list of things to look into, the safety of our people. We don't want to lose people by accidents, we don't want people to move away, so let's all start doing what's best for our community. We care.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment. Village President's Report, I have no item on the agenda. Village Administrator's Report, Mr. LaRocque.
I think you have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Committee Reports, Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Boyce.
I think you have one item. Order is 2317, order is authorizing sale of personal property surplus equipment.
Is your mic on?
Order is 2317, order is authorizing sale of personal property surplus equipment. With the two new additions, with the police station and public works, we've got some stuff left over that we want to surplus.
Jim, what's the plan for how you're going to do that? Are you going to put that on a website, or you have bids, or what?
It's going on vidergy.com, B-I-D-D-E-R-G-Y.com. We've worked with them in the past. Sorry, I didn't turn my microphone. Vidergy, B-I-D-D-E-R-G-Y.com. I think we're going to have it on the Village Mantino website and make sure that it's on Facebook, so people know about it.
So you'll be able to have the website there that people can go to?
Correct.
And the time limit or the timeframe on that, you don't know until it passes?
Either later on this month or the beginning of March. He was out last week taking pictures of all the stuff we're getting rid of.
Good.
My next Public Works meeting is 2:27, at 7:00 a.m. at the Village Boardroom. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
I have one item on the agenda. Thank you.
Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on new, for new business on the agenda. Resolution 2307, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for GIS and security cameras. We discussed several meetings, the village would like to have a map made of all security camera locations. The map will aid police during investigations and provide a detailed location map for maintenance as needed. It's very important with all the Ring cameras, too, to know where they are going to be.
Will that include the Ring cameras?
Does it include the Ring?
Yes, we're going to try to get all the residential addresses and then all-
I mean, we've got all those addresses from everybody. I mean, not that necessarily, we obviously aren't monitoring those, but they're available.
Correct.
My next Public Safety meeting is Wednesday on the 14th of April, or excuse me, on February of 7:00 a.m. here in the Village Boardroom. Pothole season in December to April, when new potholes pop up and when some of the old ones resurface. Each year, almost one-third of all car accidents fail to- Each year, almost one-third of all car accident fatalities are due to poor road conditions, and potholes are amongst the most common of these conditions. Potholes can create collision risk in a variety of ways, including the following. Loss of control. When a car hits a pothole, tire blowouts can occur, leading in steering issues and damage to suspension symptoms. Drivers may lose control of their car, striking other vehicles, buildings, or objects. Sudden stops. Vehicles that encounter a large pothole may have to brake suddenly to avoid hitting it. This sudden stop can result in drivers colliding with others, especially if they're not paying attention or are following too closely. Uneven driving surfaces. Drivers who are navigating uneven surfaces often swerve aggressively, which can lead to collisions with other vehicles, pedestrians or objects on the side of the road. Hidden dangers. If a pothole is hidden, say it is filled with water or is covered by debris, a driver may not be able to see it until it is too late. This can cause them to hit the pothole or make a hard, unexpected turn, potentially causing an accident. Secondary collisions. Often, when a driver loses control, it impacts decisions of those around them as well. This can cause a chain reaction, leading to additional accidents. Because of these pothole accident risks, best practices include drivers paying attention to surroundings so they can spot potholes and avoid them as well, as staying up to date with car maintenance so your vehicle can withstand the stress and strain of encountering a pothole. Most of all, slow down, especially at night when potholes are harder to see. While they might not seem like a huge issue, potholes can cause costly damage to tires, suspension, and other vehicle parts. A report from AAA indicates that drivers in the U.S. spend an average of $3 billion on pothole damage repairs each year. So slow down, pay attention, and save some money and avoid an accident. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on the agenda this evening. It's Ordinance 23-19, which is an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7, itinerant merchants of the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. Our itinerant merchant ordinance was long outdated and needing some revisions to be effective with potential current issues itinerant merchants present. Any questions, comments on that? Our next Billings and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for February 27, 7:00 a.m. here in the Village Boardroom. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for the 13th, 6:00 p.m., also here in the Village Boardroom. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Mr. Geske is not here. Mr. Crockett, you want to go ahead and do his?
Yes. We have this evening, the payment of the bills for $119,259.19, which includes TIP 3 of Bills authorized and paid between board cycles is $50,902.93. Trustee Geske's next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the 14th, 7:00 a.m. here in the Village Boardroom. And that's all he had on his agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. General Government, Mr. Phillips.
Yeah, I have one item. Ordinance 2318, an ordinance amending Title I Administration, Chapter 6, Board of Trustees, Section 1-6-9, public participation of the municipal code of the village. Decorum at meetings is vital to important work the Village Board and Planning Commission must do to operate. These minor adjustments are typical at most municipalities, and better define the existing rules to ensure the public and elected officials are both clear in how a meeting will be conducted. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. So the items on the consent agenda tonight are as follows. Under Old Business, we have Nothing. Under New Business, we have Ordinance 2317, which is an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property, surplus municipal equipment, the list attached. Item number two is Resolution 2307, which is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with H.R. Green in connection with providing professional engineering services for the GIS security cameras. Item number three is Ordinance 2318, which is an ordinance amending Title I Administration, Chapter 6, Board of Trustees, Section 1-6-9, public participation of the municipal code of the Village of Mantino. Item number four is Ordinance 2319, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7, itinerant merchants of the Village of Mantino Municipal Code. And finally, the approval of the payment of the bills in the amount of $119,259.19, of which $2,040 are TIP 3. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I accept the motion to take a single roll call vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Phillips.
A second.
Second by Dole. Roll call.
Phillips. Dole. Yes. Boyce. Martin.
Yes.
And Crockett.
Yes.
Motion carries. I accept the motion to approve by amends vote, the ordinance's resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crockett.
A second.
Second by Dole. Roll call.
Crockett.
Yes.
Dole. Yep. Boyce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Phillips.
Motion carries. Comments tonight? You have anything you want to talk about tonight, Mr. Boyce?
Thank you.
Mr. Martin? Mrs. Dole?
No, I do not.
Mr. Crockett?
No comments, Mayor.
Mr. Phillips. The only thing I have, just a note or comment for Mrs. Lamore, there's the Route 50 and 12,000 North Road. I know that is an issue and a problem. That is not in the Village of Mantino. So we have absolutely no jurisdiction over that. But I have talked with the Fire Chief about that, and he's talked about how so many contacts or so many calls have taken place up in that area. And I know that the county is well aware of it, as is the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, and they are monitoring that. As far as anything that's happening, as far as changes, I don't know of anything that's happening on, you know, that they've made any details as to what they might do in order to correct that. But you're correct that the, the number of calls there is, you know, very extreme in comparison to almost every other intersection in the whole county. And I have nothing further. I accept the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Phillips, explain your
Motion by Martin.
Yes.
Second by, by Dole. Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Boyce.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, for watching.
Mr. Phillips, will you explain your[1741.91]